memorable day in the country's history and I just want to kind of make note of the kind of somber occasion that we're here on. With that, I will ask Madam Clerk to call the roll, please.
Peter Talbot.
Here.
Jim Jakes.
Here.
Fiona Pearson.
Here.
John Mylone.
Here.
Don Walsh. David Belliver.
Here.
Greg Wolfe.
Here.
Tricia Kramer.
Here.
Deanna Allard.
Here.
Coramis President.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, good evening and thank you for attending tonight's special town council meeting. Before we begin, I do want to note that today is Counselor Don Walsh's birthday and because of prior plans, he is unable to be here tonight. We do wish him a happy birthday.
Happy Birthday!
The regular town council meeting of August 12th began with a two and a half hour public hearing, which pushed back the public comment portion of our regular meeting until almost 9:45 PM. Because the public hearing was extended to September 9th, and it was likely to also be well attended, I received a correspondence from Ms. Melendez. After a discussion, we agreed that a special meeting solely on the animal control facility was appropriate. Not knowing exactly when the independent investigation report would be released, we originally agreed upon a date of September 30th. On the evening of Monday, September 8th, Town Manager Shawn Kimball released the report to the council. It was the first time any member of this council had seen the report or had confirmation that it had been delivered. The next day, I spoke with Mr. Kimball and emailed Ms. Melendez to give her the report before it appeared anywhere else and to let her know that we would move the date of the special meeting to tonight, as there was no reason to wait an additional three weeks to hold this. I have been criticized for doing both those things, but I believe it was appropriate to do so, and I stand by my actions. I think it's important to reiterate some things that were said during the July council meeting. In November of 2022, immediately following the seizure of the dogs from an unimaginable situation, the town filed for lawful ownership with the Superior Court. In April 2023, following her incarceration in Pennsylvania, Ms. Ling filed a countersuit in Superior Court against the town and followed that by filing for bankruptcy. These legal cases made it impossible for the council to speak or respond to the advocacy group while these legal cases were pending. Everyone on this council knew that, and while we didn't like it, we certainly understood the consequence if we spoke. The withdrawal of those legal matters was not finalized until the beginning of 2025, and within a day or so of those cases being concluded, the town entered into a contract for the independent investigation. Again, this forced all town council members to remain silent to ensure the integrity of the investigation. As was also stated at the July meeting, the town council had a very limited role in this. The town council has no supervisory role with town staff and does not hire or fire any town employee except for the town manager. Again, the entire town council is unified in its understanding of this role. Tonight, we will hear from Town Manager Shawn Kimball and Acting Police Chief Fred Jortner. They will discuss the animal control facility, past, present, and future, and then we will have public comment. Again, I thank you all for being here tonight, and with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Kimball.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to say before I start, thank you for all of you for being here this evening. I trust everyone has had a chance to read the report that has been released this week. And again, I welcome and thank you all for being here. Tonight, we are addressing the independent investigative report into Cheshire Animal Control. The findings are clear, and everyone who reads the report should be concerned and upset. This was a failure to meet the basic standards of animal care, and while those failures can be attributed to specific actions and inactions of specific individuals, the Town of Cheshire accepts responsibility for the failures of our Animal Control Division and the supervision provided by our police department. I accept this responsibility as well, and I also accept the responsibility of ensuring through a performance improvement plan that I will outline, that nothing like this ever occurs in the future. Additionally, moving forward, our town is committed to not just improving how we care for animals, but also in being a leader in animal welfare in our region. We are not just making big changes at our facility; we will be exceeding new state's requirements for animal enclosures four years before they are a statewide requirement in 2029. We hope this demonstrates our sincerity of our commitment. In addition, tomorrow, the Town of Cheshire will begin the recruitment of a new animal control officer, as our current ACO has submitted her resignation and retirement papers. What's important to know is that new leadership will be in place at Cheshire Animal Control as we work to continue improving our facility and our operations. It's important to note, however, that no one individual should be viewed as singularly responsible for all of the failures revealed in this report. It would be unfair to point the finger of blame at a single person as this situation revealed systemic failures at multiple levels. Our commitment moving forward is clear: transparency, accountability, and compassion for every animal in our care. Additionally, we must provide our staff with the support they need to do their jobs well. We are fully committed to treating every animal we encounter with compassion and respect, and as such, I want to share some of the major steps we've already taken to improve conditions and build community trust. Major building repairs and renovations have been underway since January, including fencing upgrades and new flooring, connected dog kennel areas with individualized dog runs, new HVAC and air circulation improvements, and we're on track to meet and exceed those 2029 standards. As of the update I received just earlier this week, work is scheduled for completion in about four weeks. While renovations are ongoing, animals are being safely cared for or will be safely cared for at the Southingtons ACO facility when needed. Our Acting Police Chief Fred Jortner is committed to overseeing a dedicated team responsible for daily operations and compliance. All relevant staff have either completed or are undergoing professional training through the National Animal Care and Control Association, which is fully funded by the town. We've improved animal intake and tracking, and every animal brought in has a report, photo record, and veterinarian check when needed. Cleanliness is a top priority. Regular pest control measures are in place. Updated policies and procedures have been drafted and submitted to the state. Progress reports are posted monthly on our website. Acting Chief Jortner is boosting security and accountability with the upcoming installation of surveillance cameras at the ACO facility and requiring ACOs to wear body-worn cameras like our police officers do. He's also planning to restructure animal control operations so multiple levels of sworn officers will oversee and supervise day-to-day work. Finally, I want to thank everybody, every concerned citizen who's reached out, every member of the media who reported this story, and the activists who worked to hold us accountable. This has not been an easy conversation to have, but each one of you, through your advocacy and efforts, have worked to hold your government accountable. Your sincere concern for animals represents what's best about the Town of Cheshire. You identified the problem, and you were right. And with your help and support, we will not only do better, but we hope to become an example of doing it best. I'm now going to ask Acting Chief Jortner to provide some additional remarks reflecting the departmental vision that he's establishing as he leads our response and plans for continual improvement.
Good evening. In July, I was honored to be appointed Acting Chief of Police by Town Manager Kimball. I accepted this position with great enthusiasm after several thoughtful and productive conversations where I had the chance to share my vision for the future of the Cheshire Police Department. It became immediately clear that the town manager shared the same vision, one centered on progress, accountability, and rebuilding the public trust. That shared commitment, along with strong support from the Cheshire Town Council, has allowed us to begin implementing meaningful and necessary changes. One of the early advantages of stepping into this role was the timing of departmental contract negotiations. That window gave us a unique opportunity, an opportunity to restructure the department and realign how we operate with the best practices in modern law enforcement. The restructuring isn't just organizational, it's transformational. It focuses on mentorship, officer development, leadership training, and long-term succession planning. It's about building a strong foundation, not just for today, but for the future of our department. As part of this restructuring, we also introduced several layers of new supervisory oversight at the animal control facility. And let me be absolutely clear: this oversight is not symbolic, it is essential. Because what we've seen in the recent report is undeniable: serious failures in animal care occurred. There's no way to sugarcoat it, the report confirms it, and the responsibility lies with this department and with me. I accept responsibility fully. To the community, I want you to know we are not ignoring these failures, we are owning them, and more importantly, we are acting on them. I've read the report in full, I reviewed every finding, the mistakes that were made have been acknowledged, and they're being addressed. Moving forward, it is my decision, as your Chief of Police, that Lieutenant Miller will remain part of the solution. He understands the seriousness of the moment and the importance of his role. I believe in accountability, but I also believe in allowing people to grow, and I am confident that Lieutenant Miller will continue to produce the results that this community expects and deserves. Look, no one likes to be criticized or belittled, certainly not police officers, but I will not let ego or hubris stand in the way of progress. We want to partner with the community, with the people who bring good ideas and are willing to work together. It truly takes a village, and I believe that we have shown we are open to partnerships, and those partnerships, they have brought real results. Just this morning, we released a press release regarding the arrest of three individuals in an animal cruelty case. That case led to the seizure of over 20 animals. That case wasn't just a law enforcement success, it was a community effort, from securing probable cause to making the arrests, to caring for those animals, placing them in safe homes, and incorporating advice and ideas from many of you. Gene, I didn't even know what a catatow was until a couple of weeks ago. On Monday, we will be posting for a new animal control officer. For those with the skill, the temperament, and the desire to serve Cheshire, we invite you to apply. To the residents of Cheshire, your trust matters to us. The well-being of the animals and our care matter deeply to us, and I want you to know that the Cheshire Police Department is committed to being a leader, not just in public safety, but in animal welfare reform. We will do better, we must do better, and we will. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball, and thank you, Chief Jortner. I do want to, I want tonight to be about the public, but before we get to that, I do want to at least give the council, because again, we just received this report two days ago as well, so if there are any questions or comments from members of the council, they may do so now.
Peter, I have a, as you acknowledge, Don isn't here tonight. He prepared a written statement in case we were given an opportunity to say something. If this is an appropriate time, I'm happy to read it.
Sure.
Okay. So this is a statement from councilperson Don Walsh. It's not my, these are not my words, these are Don's. I should have apologized. Let me switch to my reading glasses.
Should have made the font bigger.
I want to begin by apologizing for not being in attendance this evening. This meeting was scheduled with short notice, and I had a prior commitment that I was unable to change. First and foremost, I want to extend a sincere apology to the animals, to the residents who came to us seeking help, and to the people of our town. Mistakes were made at multiple levels, beginning with animal control and extending to those of us on the town council who share responsibility for how this situation was handled. We should have done better. This matter began in 2023, and as time went on and the dogs remained under our care, we should have taken a closer and more thorough look at their health and living conditions. I asked for updates periodically and was always told they were fine. I accepted those assurances at face value, but in hindsight, I recognize that was not the case. Much of what we learned came from concerned residents who attended meetings and sent us information. That is not how it should have been handled. The lack of transparency, both to the public at times and within the council, was unacceptable, but acknowledging that does not excuse it. I want to especially thank Gene Melendez, her group, and many residents who consistently came forward with information and advocacy. Their persistence made clear that we had a serious problem. Once the investigation began, we were advised to remain silent until it was complete, which was difficult, especially as we listened to criticism and at times received information we had not been given ourselves. Some of that criticism was sharp, but I understand it, we fell sure. Over the past few months, I have had the opportunity to meet with Gene and discuss constructive solutions for improving our animal control facility. She has presented thoughtful and practical ideas, many of which have already been shared with Chief Jortner and Town Manager Shawn Kimball. I am encouraged to see that some of these ideas are already being put into practice and that open communication is now moving us in the right direction. Gene also played an important role in the most recent hoarding case in Cheshire. She reached out to me with some information. I relayed the concern to Chief Jortner, and together swift action was taken to rescue animals and hold those responsible accountable. That is a clear example of what happens when we work together. Once again, I want to apologize not for not pushing harder, for not questioning more deeply, and for not doing better. I take that responsibility seriously, and I pledge to do better moving forward, Don Walsh.
And thank you for letting me read that, Peter. And I just, I want to just echo some of Don's comments and acknowledge on a personal level my failures in not being more persistent, more interested, maybe more, and I became somewhat complacent. And I share, as other people who've said here, my level of responsibility for what occurred here, and thank you all for being so relentless in your pursuit of a solution here. Thank you, Mr. Mylone.
Just, can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Regarding, and I will say, obviously, I echo the sentiments that both Don and John, right, we could need to, you know, take this on, and it's unfortunate, right, that we got such a slow start, but now hopefully we are working with this such a wonderful group that has brought so much information to us, which wasn't coming to us from other sources, so we truly appreciate that information. My question is, is there, and maybe Jeff, is there any information in this report that is, that differs from the DOAG report? I mean, is there significant finding differences between that?
The DOAG reports are part of the report from Attorney Murphy.
Right.
Yep. The investigator applied a standard, as you can appreciate as a lawyer, to the investigation, he applied a standard. So this investigation was done as part of an operations and personnel review, so it's a, whereas the DOAG investigation was done from a regulatory review perspective, so it's two different standards. I don't know that there, the breadth of the investigator's report is wider than the DOAG report, because the DOAG report was based on a couple of site visits that they made and some interviews that they did. So I think it's, I think a lot of the findings overlap and are similar, but there's different standards and a little bit of a broader look.
Wait, and then I guess my other question is, and this is directed at Shawn, obviously with April resigning, are there any other repercussions for town employees as a result of this investigation and report?
So at this time, I can't discuss any of those pending personnel matters, but, you know, in due time, I think we'll be, we're certainly discussing that regularly and taking action. So I can't comment publicly, but yes, those are a part of all of this.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Kramer, I'm sorry, you had your hand up and I'm late getting to you.
I just wanted to thank everybody for their advocacy, and I'm really looking forward to the recovery from the systemic failures of what happened in Cheshire. And I know the quality of our employees, I know that we can recover from this, I know we can learn from this and grow. And one of the most important parts that I want to take from this is taking this fight to the state level. There are regulatory and statutory changes that I think, with firsthand knowledge of some high-level breakdowns prior to having that many animals in our care, just that being legal and how they were here and for how long they were here, and the amount of oversight that was done through state-level channels, I think is a really good place for us to take this next, just so that we can possibly keep this from ever happening again, from overwhelming people that care, from overwhelming a town that has consistently shown proper use of its facilities. And I think bringing our testimony to Hartford is the next step, it doesn't stop here. And thank you, everybody, for consistently being here.
I'll go. Yeah, I just really want to echo what's been said. I mean, I agree there, obviously, there were failures at all levels, DOAG, you know, our ACO in the department, you know, all the way up to, you know, I agree that we heard that, you know, things were okay, we didn't have any reason to think otherwise, and that's, you know, I guess to some degree complacency on our part, so, you know, I personally apologize for that. The, you know, I also agree that we've had some conversations, and there are some good ideas coming our way and the town's way, and as, I guess, as Don said through John, you know, there, some of those ideas are being implemented. I'm looking forward to our new facility and looking forward to what else we can do to make sure, not only make sure this doesn't happen again, but to, you know, these issues are, they seem to be becoming more and more prevalent. I think since it happened to us in Cheshire, there's been four or five other ones, and I think when it happened here, I think we were all like, it'll never happen again, which, you know, that's clearly not the case, so we need to be prepared for not only this kind of thing, but also all the other kind of needs of animals and wildlife. And I think that, you know, we have a strong group of advocates here that can help us do that in Cheshire, and it's a plus for us, so I'm looking forward to how we can tap into that, and again, apologize for my complacency and for not, you know, really kind of looking a little harder at the problem.
Mr. Belliver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of comments. One is, and I know you, in your opening statement, you did outline a timeframe, and yes, I was one of the ones who raised the concern that I didn't think that a two-days' notice for this meeting was enough time to give less than two-days' notice to a group that was expecting a meeting on the 30th. I understand the purpose of it, why, to expedite this meeting, but I don't think it's enough, and I know there are some people who can't be here tonight as a result of not having a, you know, that timeframe and that change. So that's, you know, one of the things that I definitely wanted to bring up, and I thank for those who have been able to come out here tonight, not only tonight, but for the last 10-plus months, you've been coming out, meeting after meeting, and advocating for a very unfortunate, tragic situation and change. Hopefully, with this report, we will have an opportunity to make changes. Those are already occurring. Thank you to your group and to Gene and to other people who are working with the town and with Chief Jortner to improve the facility and to make it an even better facility than we had originally, we were already going to upgrade it, but now we know what's better to make it, you know, sometimes make it hopefully the state-of-the-art animal control facility. So that is all because of you. There's no doubt about the fact that your advocacy is what has brought us here, what has brought this to an investigation, and it's interesting. So I have to thank you, and I, you know, day in and day out, I thank people for this because it truly is, you've brought us information, as we've told through the process, we were hearing things from you that we weren't hearing from here, from the town, from, you know, from other sources. You know, you were bringing new information, and every time we were told information, there was new information that you had that was, that would either supplement or contradict what we were being told. So we truly appreciate everything that you do, and you're continuing to stay with it because, you know, in addition to this report, there's information in here, but it's funny because we seem, even though we have this report, we're already getting information that supplements it or contradicts some of the information that's in there. So that is, you know, so I hope that you will continue to continue to advocate for this situation. It's been an unfortunate 10 months, as despite the truth of the information provided, this group has repeatedly been disrespected, disregarded, and dismissed, and that disrespect shown to the animal advocates is a tragedy in addition to the underlying tragedy of why we're all here. So thank you for your continued advocacy, and we look forward to working with you going forward.
I just want to thank our town manager, Shawn Kimball, for your statement and for taking responsibility, Chief Jortner for taking responsibility, my fellow councilors for taking responsibility. I too take responsibility. These problems are systemic, as you have stated several times here at the podium. I want to thank you all for your patience, as grueling as it was for us to wait for this. I know it was grueling for you to attend these meetings as well and to continue your advocacy, and so I too thank you for the time you put into this endeavor. We know that changes are going to occur, I know we are committed, every single one of us across this dais, and in the police department are committed, we know you are committed, we know that already, you've proven that relentlessly, and so we know real change will come from this, positive change will come from this. So I look forward to working with you, working with Police Chief Jortner, Town Manager Shawn Kimball, as we improve, make, as we said, Cheshire one of the best facilities, resources that are available in the future. So again, I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Anyone else? Ms. Allard.
Okay, I actually did not prepare anything, which is very unusual for me, because I don't really like to speak off the cuff. I tend to speak in shorthand, so forgive me. I did spend today reading the investigation. We just received this, what it said, Monday night, and I worked, well, Tuesday, we had a meeting, and then I worked all day on Wednesday, so here we are, and I really just read the So first and foremost, I would like to thank Shawn for your commitment to moving forward, commitment to listening to the concerns of the community, your commitment to finding the truth, and also accepting responsibility and moving forward. I also am very grateful for all of you, for your advocacy- and moving forward. I also am very grateful for all of you, for your advocacy. I really, truly believe in democracy. This is what democracy looks like. It's important that you come out and you speak your concerns. This was an exceptionally unusual situation. I know you were frustrated in how long this took. I was frustrated too. I have said to you, I have reached out, you know, and I'm a little emotional right now because I take issue with some of the statements that were made, that this group has been disrespected. I have said to you, please do not mistake our silence as not caring. And that was disregarded, you know, and I get, like, after month after month of not hearing anything, you feel like you're not being heard. You feel like we don't care. The reality is, we do. We did. And we said that to you repeatedly. Please do not mistake the silence as disrespect. It never was. As Attorney De Norfio said, "It is not within our purview to even investigate this." I liken this position as a council. First of all, I don't feel like I represent the town. We represent you. And whether or not the town is failing is on the town, and the town needs to take accountability, and the town needs to do better. And I appreciate the fact that those on the dais who are hoping to, you know, get re-elected and move forward will take the responsibility. I am in a unique position in this role. I will definitely not be moving forward. I am not running for reelection. So that being said, I appreciate that they're taking the responsibility. But in general, the council is not responsible for the day-to-day workings of the town. It's a little bit more like being on a jury. And, you know, kind of like a small analogy. But month after month, we were hearing from the plaintiff, month after month after month. And we were asked to take action. We were asked to make a decision based on one side of the story. And we cannot even put in our little one-ninth of a vote on something that should be done with only one side of the story. We really did have to see the full investigation to even say, yes, this is the proper decision. Yes, I support you moving forward with this. So please understand that there is a difference between being responsible advocates. And I understand that this was an emotional situation. I care about dogs. I care about my own dog. I have one that requires grooming. I know how difficult it is and how quickly her eyes get goopy. I get it. I get it. But during these months, this group falsely accused this entire council, including my Republican peers, and I will defend everybody's integrity here, falsely accused us of covering up something, of knowing that animals were being abused and did nothing. You falsely accused us of not doing our jobs. You called us stupid. You claimed that we should be arrested. One person said we should be arrested for not caring and saying that we should suffer, you know, fumes from bleach for not caring. The reality is, it was never within our ability to do more than what we did. So please, don't mistake the silence as disrespect. That was never the case. I truly appreciate you coming out. This is what democracy looks like. But we do need to make sure that we understand what everybody's role is in this situation and be respectful. I hope that we can close this chapter, and I am really, really grateful that there's collaboration between Chief Jordaner, between you, Gene, and your group, and the council. And I really do look forward to seeing this town move forward with the best possible ACO that the town can have faith in. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Allard. Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have something written because I'm much better reading than I am off the cuff. Thank you all for coming tonight. I am thankful that we are at a place where we can put this horrible situation to rest. To do that, we collectively have to acknowledge several things. This is all, this all started at the hands of a despicable animal abuse case involving adjudicated criminals. The animals that were seized were rescued from harm. I also, I want to also acknowledge that the Cheshire Animal Control and Cheshire Police Department who oversee that operation apparently failed to live up to the high standards we deserve in Cheshire. In training my own dog, I learned several, I learned something that I have carried with me through his life and I use in dealing with people as well. You set your animal up for success. You do not bring a reactive dog into an environment where you know they will do poorly and expect it to have a negative outcome. And you teach them where they are not, you teach them where they are not distracted beyond their abilities to stay focused and behave properly. Wiesa Town did not set up this situation at the animal control facility to succeed. I cannot defend the way our animal control officers handled the dogs on several occasions. I also cannot defend how the animal control operation was overseen by the police department. Mistakes were made with terrible consequences. I do not need to go into the details of what happened and why. I will leave that to the report. I trust that there will be appropriate consequences for mistakes made. I understand the remedies were not made at the pace everyone desired, but laws are in place, and we as a town must follow them. You or your family member would be awarded the same procedure without arbitrary judgment. I do want to speak to the process. I understand the desire for quick action and the modern human desire for instant satisfaction. We live in a drive-thru, click-and-receive society. This is not how the legal system and government works. It is designed that way. We are all awarded due process in this country. That is what makes this country great. We all should be defending that, not finding ways to undermine it. Do I have my own opinions on when the pace of what I personally want to accomplish does not satisfy me? Of course. But there are rules and procedures. I adhere to an oath to uphold the charter of our town, laws of our state and country, and take those seriously. We should have taken different steps in the beginning of this incident when we received the animals to afford the best opportunity for an outcome that all the animals and people deserved. We did not do that. I do not take that failure lightly. My lack of outward anger towards that, towards what happened should not be taken as indifference. I also want to take this opportunity to address the advocates who have been so passionate. I admire participation in doing the hard work to make our town the place we love and call home. I accept that being in the role I was elected to serve in comes with being in the public eye. It is integral to serving. What I do not accept is the vitriol directed at this council over the past year. We serve voluntarily, offering time and energy to do our best to make this town safer, more prosperous, and healthier. I genuinely believe that the advocates that have come to our meetings have had good intentions, but those intentions became clouded by unfounded accusations directed at this council, all of this council. Not speaking directly to verbal abuse allegations and slander is not because we did not want to defend ourselves or the situation. It is because we were advised that doing so would harm the town. I was elected to serve the entire town's best interests, and not speaking to every insult and accusation is rooted in that. I will not engage in defending myself on Facebook or elsewhere when fingers are wagged at me, calls of corruption are thrown around casually, or when we are told or anyone else on this dais should be imprisoned. Bullying is unacceptable and never leads to positive outcomes. Yelling at your dog damages the relationship and can trigger aggression and mistrust. It is not a good way to set up, set a relationship up, set a relationship up for success. The same can be replied, can be applied to their human counterparts. The entire council has been unified in our desire to resolve this situation as quickly as possible and do what is best for Cheshire and the animals. This has never been about politics, and using it as a wedge issue now is disingenuous. It is my genuine desire that everyone involved in this, from the state to the advocates, learns from this situation so we all can be better caretakers of our animals and our town, and everyone has the proper tools to be successful. Thank you all for your diligence to this cause and caring for our community. I genuinely appreciate the passion. Lastly, a special shout-out to my dog Carl, who greets me after every one of our long nights unconditionally. He deserves all of the butt-scratches tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. I have one question, and then I'd like to make a statement, and then I promise we will turn it over to the public. Mr. Kimball, can you give us a sense of where we stand in regard to the consent order that we entered into with DOAG?
Sure. So I addressed earlier the facility improvements. That's kind of, I think, the primary remaining item. I think I said earlier that should be completed by October. A lot of the policies, procedure updates, intake forms, all the other things that have been identified and have been implemented in response have been implemented and will continue to be. So I think the next step would be summarizing all of that. And I know, and Meg can turn it to Fred a little bit. I know he's been in touch with folks from the state, Kelly Baker and others, to monitor and confirm progress in those areas. So I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add, Fred?
So just to echo what Sean said, we have to finish the renovations at the facility. They all have to be signed off on. And then I think we're well on our way to being signed off totally for the consent.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So as stated by Mr. Kimball, by Chief Jordaner, and my colleagues, there is certainly plenty of blame to go around. And I too acknowledge regrets and bear responsibility over what has been a very long ordeal. At one of the very first meetings that the advocacy groups attended, I mentioned that all of us on the dais, including our town manager and town attorney, pet owner chief, are you a pet owner?
I used to be. My daughter is a Cavalier, so...
So we've all had, we've all had animals. Most of us, or many of us, had rescue dogs. Sorry. I lost mine back in September of last year. And it's still difficult. So we treat them like family. So when this happened and we learned that it happened, we would be heartless if we were not touched by this. Believe me when I say, we were all deeply touched by what happened. Our silence was not out of a lack of caring. I promise you that. You know, the other night, I talked about how slow government is. It's like, how long does it take to turn a battleship? Well, you people more than anyone should know that it's taken close to a year to resolve this, and finally, here we are tonight. And I still hold by my actions, Mr. Velliver, that this did not need to wait another three weeks before sitting in this room tonight and looking each one of you in the eye and being able to speak to each one of you for the first time, truly for the first time. Ms. Allard mentioned it in her comments. I had it jotted down as a bullet point, too, that on Tuesday night, we saw democracy in action when the people from the North End advocated for a position they truly believed in. Well, for close to a year, all of you have advocated for a position that you truly believed in. I give you all the credit for the efforts that you made and how you kept this in the forefront for as long as you did. Persistence does pay off. So I want to thank you. I want to thank Mr. Kimball. I want to thank Chief Jordaner. You know, I give, I give our acting chief a lot of credit because he really was the one that opened up the door so that we could start having, so that we could start having a dialogue.
Thanks, Chief.
And we're there. You know, every one of us, to a person that represents the town, wants to make sure that our animal control facility is the best that it can be. We expect it from our schools. We expect it from everything we do in this town, and that certainly includes our animal control facility. The last thing I want to say is to Ms. Melendez, we almost had breakfast together one morning. I'm hoping that sometime in the future, that we can do so and actually sit at the same table. And with that, let's hear from you. If you guys want to queue up on the side, let's hear from the public.
That was funny. That was funny. Can I have just a minute to thank folks here before I start to speak? I know I don't speak this. I wanted to...
Do me a favor. Just the one in the middle, just, yeah, see?
She knows. She knows.
Thank you, Mariah.
Thank you, honey. I came in, and hearing so many of you speak from your heart, it left me speechless, which doesn't happen often, ask Mariah. It was touching, and I just want to thank those who appreciated our effort, hundreds of hours of our effort. I do want to say, not really fair to throw comments that some people in the group said as something that we all ascribe to, not cool, but I'm going to go past that. Because, Sean, bravo. Thank you for coming forward. I didn't expect any of this, honestly. I didn't expect people to say, hey, we're sorry, we're responsible. I really didn't. I don't think anybody here did. So it kind, we're kind of a little flummoxed. Thank you, as Peter said, for reaching out to me. Amazing. Thank everyone who met with me, who talked to me, who at least heard what we believe in. This is what we believe in. So thank you for letting me say that. And I will, some of my speech, after what you all said, may not make sense, but I'll cut it as it needs to be. We all have the findings of the town's investigation, and it isn't really a surprise to any of us. There is more evidence and documentation than it covered. We had that, and it seems Attorney Joyce Glass sent off information to the town. She had some disagreements with that investigation. She had stated that she went to the town lawyer with Rob and Mel, who brought this case forward. Geez, that's courage like you can't believe. Anyway, regardless, all the evidence in the town's investigation confirmed that there was neglect by that animal control officer. We also learned that she had retired, along with Chief Dreyf, that we learned retired a short time ago. These last 11 and 1/2 months have exhausted us all. We have spent hundreds of hours advocating for these animals. We stood in freezing cold and the sweltering heat out there, rallying for justice, Marina. We attended every town hall meeting with documents and pictures. But the hardest truth is that we can't go backwards. We couldn't save Tiny, Winnie, or Lily. We couldn't save the wildlife that died in that cardboard box without air holes. We couldn't fix the decisions and the systems that deny justice when those 32 dogs were at the pound. If we could have, we would have said, never agree to a negotiation between DOAG and the town of Cheshire that removed felony criminal charges. What needs to be done now in terms of the town council and the town manager? Please don't suspend communication moving forward, no matter what the problem is. Please have knowledge of what's going on in the town. Please don't give the attorney in the town all the power to keep things from you. Please don't do that. This has to change. Moving forward, the town needs to hold formal and informal meetings with residents and the community and answer their questions. I did not create this group only to highlight the terrible things that have happened to those animals. I wanted to bring everyone together so we could create a better pound and a better culture around that pound. Toward that end, I'm working with Acting Police Chief and the newest animal control officer, Kayla. Yesterday, her and I went to Dan Cosgrove Animal Shelter and en- an incredible facility, whose staff shared their ideas and best practices. I brought some of those to the town manager. I certainly sent some to the chief. There still needs to be townwide changes to rebuild trust and fix what has been broken for far too long. Our work will not end, and our group will not disband. I wanted to take a moment to thank those courageous people that I did already, who first brought the case forward. Mel, if nobody, if you don't know Mel, who is the prospect ACO, who brought this case forward. Rob, who was the Cheshire ACO. Is Christine Cormier here? She tried to come here. Christine is the one who first brought the case to you guys. Desmond's, everybody in Desmond's, and every volunteer, every witness that came forward to talk to us and this group here, I'm going to cry, that showed up month after month for a year. I want to thank all of you. We're not finished yet. This may not be the outcome that we hope for, but it proves why we must demand better. Refuse to settle for less and keep pushing until real change comes about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melendez.
Hi, Council. Lori Barnes. Do I have to say my address again? I say it all the time.
It seems, it seems low. Yeah. Oh, tilt it back up. There it is.
Oh, I'm 5'8". Sorry, Jean is short. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
So, yeah, I'm a little shaky because, you know, I, I'm grateful that you guys talked to all of us tonight. And I understand what you were all saying. Oh, and Deana, by the way, I don't like usually ever use it, but ChatGPT, there was no way I was reading 90 pages. It took me like two minutes. It threw it up there. And I was like, for a second grader, thank you, Lord.
I had three doctor's appointments in and like.
No, ChatGPT, shoot, throw it in. You're like, oh, my God. So anyways, I thank you all for talking to us. And so you understand, like, we, from my perspective, I couldn't just go like knock on the police department, the people we were talking to. We, we had to come to you. And at first, it was so urgent for me, I'm only talking for me, because there were, I was trying to talk to April myself to try to, let me come help, let me, and she was talking to me like they were like pieces of paper, like they were evidence. And I was like, but, okay, forget about everything else. Are they okay? Are they safe? Let me, so we're past that now. I've talked about forgiveness with accountability, and it's true. There's another thing which we have to move forward, right? There's a, based on biblical, but there's a scripture in Philippians that says, forgetting those things which are behind, which that's what we have to do. We have to forget those things which are behind. And we have to move forward. And that's what I want to do. But I'm just going to make a note that when we were all working, it just seemed like so awkward sometimes talking with the council and the attorney. I'm sorry, I remember personally spoke, but it just seemed like, and I know sometimes there's differences, but I'm just hoping that going forward, even when you have differences, that we could play nice in the sandbox together. Because you could feel the tension at times. And it wasn't even at us. I could feel it amongst yourselves. And for whatever the reason, I'm not trying to get into that. I'm just trying to say that it was noticed. And it was, it was kind of, I felt bad for it because I was like, we're trying to get this done. And then I sensed this. So just moving forward is just a note. Chief, I'm so impressed with what you've done so far. I'm so grateful. I say this, I say this as respectfully as possible. I think it was the previous leadership, the way it left, you know, I just think that was a cowardly to leave everybody hanging like that. But we're better off for what we're, what we have now. And I'm grateful for it. And thank you, everyone, for listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
Oh, great, Lori. Thanks. I still don't have a step stool, but I'm glad I won't need it after this. Holly Fontaine, Vernon, Connecticut. So I'm glad I don't have to start off with pointing out the obvious because we did this for 11 months. But I do have to say thank you to Mel and to Rob, because they are the heroes. They were the ones that endured mental issues with all of this day in and day out, trying to get justice, as we all did too, and Desmond's army. Anyways, instead, I would really like to thank our leader and dear friend, Jean Melendez. They say it takes a village. And it certainly does. The constant work that goes into an organization like this is unmeasurable, along with keeping the volunteers motivated to fight because they are mentally exhausted. These are the highs and there are lows. Compassion, fatigue, anger, tears of despair that we may not have gotten our message across to justice for these animals. She kept us motivated in the group daily, and she will still continue to motivate us. Thank you for, thank you to all the volunteers for showing up at every rally, every meeting, staying engaged in the group, as I know that this was extremely difficult and emotional. We are volunteers, but we have a heart and a passion for animals and advocating for what is right. Thank you to every single one of you, but especially thank you to Jean for everything you have done and will continue to do for the state of Connecticut to fight for animals. We will continue to be with you every step of the way.
Thank you.
Marina Bagliori, Savington, Connecticut. It's getting emotional. I've been in every meeting, every step, and let's get together. So it's very frustrating coming every month to the meeting and hearing. And I don't want to get in details. I'm shocked and surprised what town council take accountability and kind of explain. We do have still a lot of question, what I will not ask today, maybe for the future. We still have a lot of work to do. My concern and question, this is all can be done if you open your eyes and listen to us. Because every month, we bring us statement that's not from us. It's been from another ACOs, from animal controls and vet offices and Department Agriculture. And everybody ignores. And to respond, we call this personally, one of the town council calling horrible name on Facebook and in this meeting, but we going past this and we going forward to this, you know. So we've been accused, we've been horrible treating for the last 12 months, but continues to doing for the animals. So my question is and concern, we can done with many months ago in October, where Christine Cormier submit to the lawyer all statements of abuse animals in Cheshire Pound. We can avoid $60,000 investigation. If you went to the pound and just check what's going on in your own pound. I know ACO says everything okay, but you have to doing your work or whatever and check what's going on, you know, how you all knew what 28 dogs came to the pound, how she can take care about them. It's not only her problem. A lot of people been involved. Your supervisor, town council manager, did you ever ask a question, how one ACO or two ACO can take care about of 28 dogs when we only can have 18 spots in a pound? This is question should we start asking many months ago. We could avoid that of the animals what we can't return and tragic situation what we come today, what, two, three years later. I'm thankful for the new chief who doing great job. And while we're doing new pound and we're willing to work and help in any way we can. But question is, 32 dog been suffering for two years and nobody knows. And you, I'm not sure what's happened. And because new chief, you finally start to listen and respond. Investigation, I read about investigation, 1 o'clock in the morning, where Jean text me and say, did you see report? And I read for two, three times, 1 o'clock in the morning in my bed. And I say, 89 pages? What do I missing? All this paper and report sitting in my desk because I read, I give you statement about this. With all evidence been in this report to show that ACO of Cheshire abused and they collect this dog and never done nothing to help them. So why did we wait all this year to find this? How come we can resolve this problem in October? So we can have some communication and listen what we tell us without pointing the finger, you know? And somebody posted today, so ACO gone as tomorrow. So what, she shouldn't be criminal charges against her because she committed crime. A lot of people in this group not happy about this, including myself. When I saw this today, this is not fair to this animals. We will never forget about free dog who die under her care. And she will retire tomorrow with a pension and live her life and not going any coincidence to this. How it's possible. We have to doing better. Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you, Ms. Bagliori. If I can interrupt you for just one second because I was remiss. I do have an email that came in through the town clerk that I wanted to read. It says, Dear Mr. Talbot, as I cannot attend the 9/11 council meeting, I would be appreciative if you could read my brief question into the record and hopefully provide an answer. I would like to thank you for releasing the investigative report dealing with animal control and ACO Liler. As I mentioned at last month's council meeting, I was made aware that multiple people had contacted the town attorney on or about May 4, 2024, advising of some of the terrible conditions and treatment of the dogs at the Cheshire AC facility. When I mentioned this to council, I was unaware that these people had apparently spoken to Lou DiAgostino and not Mr. D'Onofrio. My question is, did Mr. DiAgostino inform Mr. D'Onofrio of what was happening at the pound? If so, what did Mr. D'Onofrio do with that information? Basically, I am asking, what was done with that alarming information? Mr. D'Onofrio is listed as the managing partner of his firm, and it seems reasonable that his associate would have informed him of these allegations. It was Mr. D'Onofrio's job to know. Had actions been taken, dogs that died would likely still be alive. Conditions could have immediately been improved for the dogs at the pound. The ACO could have been warned, remediated, and much suffering, aggravation, and hard feelings could have been prevented. The council could have gone home earlier most months, and the town of Cheshire would be at least $60,000 richer. Thanks again for reading this in my absence, and thanks for releasing the report as you promised. Jim Block, 60 Contour Drive, Cheshire.
My name is Maura Murco. I live at 91 Linwood Drive Extension. First, I'd like to thank you for all your heartfelt sentiments. And Dana, or Deana, I'm sorry. You're right. There was, there was a lot of mudslinging on both sides. Okay, I apologize if I was one of them. I truly do. I was just very angry. To get to this, I'm going to quote Attorney D'Onofrio from the July 8 meeting. He wrote, "The town council's role seems to be something that is not really that well understood. And maybe that's my fault for not explaining it more frequently." Hell, yeah. Okay. What my thing is, is when I hear your campaign promises, your go-getters, you're intelligent people, you're, I expect you to know all the crevices and everything that's going on. I was shocked when the attorney said, they don't know 97% of the stuff I'm privy to. I was like, wait a second. Why? I elected you folks. I didn't elect him. And for him to tell you to be completely silent, I was shocked. You are intelligent, well-spoken, trustworthy people. And he told you not to say anything. You couldn't even say, hey, listen. Not, I mean, you spoke for most of the people, Mr. Talbot. And yes, you did say, don't take our silences, whatever. But these heartfelt sentiments that you just gave tonight, if you gave those at each individual meeting or something, just say, I hear your concerns. I'm concerned too. I am trying to get to the bottom of this. We are talking. We are all talking. We are all getting together. You, Mr. D'Onofrio, said it in July while you sat there and let us continually get frustrated and ask them questions. You could have told us your speech back in February, March, April, May, June. But you waited till July to tell us stuff we already knew. It was a court case, lots of court cases. And you handled it so professionally. I'm not discounting that. But I can't believe you just sat here while we were constantly getting aggravated and sad and angry, when each of you could have just said, we hear your concerns. We are going to get to the bottom of this. The heartfelt way you just did. That's, that's the communication, and it would have saved a lot of the mudslinging. I mean, Mr. Velliber just asked a question one night, when is this report going to be due? We were elated. Oh, my God, we heard from somebody. So I just, I just don't think it's right that people who are told to shush, who are supposed to just make us know that you're doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murco.
Well, hi, my name is Lisette. Like everyone else, I just need to move forward. And I written and I wrote something right after I read a report. Some things have changed. But I, I'm going to read my report because I need to move forward. I have read the $60,000 independent investigation of the Cheshire Animal Control Facility, and I had to say that I felt insulted. Your independent investigation insulted my intelligence. The $60,000 investigation is only a recap of the previous reports that have been circulating in the original Cheshire Community, Connecticut Community Forum, and the concerns that some of the citizens of Cheshire have mentioned over and over in these meetings. Nothing else. Does it mean that you spend all those months and all that money to tell us something that we already knew? Really? Since the town of Cheshire already paid $60,000 for this investigation, I decided to read the report and take some notes. Page four. April Liler, quote, offered multiple times that in the future, she would like, she will ask for more help and that she has learned a lot from this incident, end quote. I disagree with her use of the word incident. What happened to those dogs at the Cheshire ACO wasn't an incident. In my opinion, what happened at the Cheshire ACO was animal cruelty. So first, what is animal cruelty? I would like to read a definition that I found at the Connecticut General Assembly, Section 53-247. I am not going to read the whole thing. Cruelty to animals. Any person who unjustifiably, sorry, sometimes I cannot pronounce our words, unjustifiably injures any animal or who having impounded or confined any animal fails to give such animal proper care or neglects to cage or restrain any such animal from doing injury to itself or to another animal, or fails to supply any such animal with wholesome air, food, and water. Now, I would like to read a few comments made by some of the people that were interviewed during this, this investigation. This is a stuff that you already know, but I'm going to read it because I want to move forward. Page six, quote, Erickson described finding moldy food in the laundry room's cabinets with some container even having maggots, end quote. Quote, Mafu, who is Kurzanovsky's sister and is herself an ACO in Goodrich, had also been in the Cheshire ACO facility on a handful of occasions. She similarly described it as disgusting and even reporting seeing rats eating from open containers of food, which she opained risk exposing the dogs to leptospirosis. Page seven, Wells, who served as the assistant ACO from around March. Wells, who served as the assistant A C O from around March twenty nineteen until September twenty twenty, explained that the facility was cluttered with donation. It did have mice, and he would sometimes find bags of open food, end quote. This means that the ling dogs only was an excuse, an excuse for Leiler not to do her job. Page eight. Vuskovich spoke with Korsanowski, who told Vuskovich that when she arrived to groom the dogs in May twenty twenty-four, they were caked with matted fur, urine, and feces, end quote. Quote, Wilson assisted Korsanowski in grooming the dogs in May and explained to Vuskovich that the dogs she groomed were severely matted with long curly nails and red, raw irritated skin, end quote. Page nine. Korsanowski claimed that the dogs had matted fur and that she believed that Leiler was not grooming the dogs at all. She described their conditions as filthy, which resulted in skin irritation. She also recalled that in September twenty twenty-three, she called in to assist with a dog that needed its nail clipped. Korsanowski was of the opinion that the dog likely had never had its claws clipped since coming to the facility because its nails had grown into its paw path, end quote. Quote, Anderson noted in her statement supplemented by the statements of two other Maryland Animal Hospital employees, Dumas and Estebes, that Tiny had urine scalding, urine stained fur, multiple mats, stool stuck to the hair by his anus, alopecia on his distal limbs, red, raw skin, grade for dental disease, an infected mouth with a rotten dangling canine, chronic dry eye, and a moderately deep central coronal ulcer, end quote. Quote, Leiler also admitted that one of the dogs had an ingrown toenail, end quote. Page ten, Anderson, quote, Anderson noted in her statement that when Leiler brought Tiny back to the, to be euthanized on July twenty thirty-first, Leiler requested a letter clearing her of any wrongdoing in his, in her care. Leiler expressed concern that the prior owner, Ling, was going to sue her for having the dog euthanized. In other words, she was, she was more worried about her well-being than the dog's well-being. Quote, multiple witnesses recall seeing Leiler clean the kennels using water and bleach with the dogs still inside, end quote. Page twelve, quote, Wilson noted that there were no air holes in the boxes. Wilson told Vuskovich that she and Erickson found a diseased baby rabbit in one. In her interview with us, Korsanowski recalled the same incident and noted that they also found a dead bird in one box, end, end quote. So after reading all this, this is my conclusion and my opinion. April Leiler exercised animal cruelty. In other words, she is a criminal. And in spite of all these actions, you, the town council and the Cheshire Police Department, have decided to keep protecting her. April Leiler is an unethical person who gets paid for a job that she doesn't perform. April Leiler is a liar who has used all kind of excuses not to only perform her job, but to hide her actions and blame others whenever possible. It was often said that she, said here, that she didn't perform her job because she needed help. However, she never accepted help when it was offered. April Leiler was shown, has shown such disregard, and you too, for the lives of the animals that she was supposed to take care of. And the worst part is that, as I said before, April Leiler is being protected by you, the town council and the Cheshire Police Department. April Leiler should be in jail for what she did to those dogs. At the very least, she should be fired, and her photo should be shown on the internet with a note saying that she was fired due to the accusations of animal cruelty. Before I forget, I have a question for you. How is that you, the town council and the Connecticut Department of Agriculture enter into an agreement? Page six, quote, animal cruelty charges against Leiler for the conditions at the Cheshire A C O facility were dismissed, and that instead, and that instead, the Connecticut Department of Agriculture and the Town of Cheshire entered an agreement to close the case. How did you agree upon that? I never thought that I would witness this amount of corruption in this country, and I never thought that I would see this amount of corruption in this town. So this is what you were protecting. This is what the town council and the Cheshire Police Department is protecting and covering up, this. And I hope now I can move forward.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is Michelle Regunis. I live at three fifteen North Brooksville in Cheshire. I just want to say thank you for moving this meeting to today because I have not been able to attend any of these meetings. Unfortunately, I'm a waitress, so I work at night, and I've missed every single meeting. So I just want to start off by saying thank you so much to all of the animal advocate groups, all of you guys here for, and thank you for attending every meeting these past year. I am a supporter of Desmond's Army, and since I'm a recent resident of Cheshire, I was kind of debating, do I wear the purple shirt tonight or the orange shirt? Purple shirt or the orange shirt? But I decided since I moved to Cheshire a few months ago, I want to be part of the community. So I'm here to be on your guest side. Okay. Very funny, I'm not really good at, like, public speaking. To the Cheshire Town Council, although I'm a recent resident of Cheshire, I've been closely following the disturbing case of animal abuse that has shocked and saddened this community. From the initial news reports to the deeply troubling monthly updates, the severity of the situation has been appalling. After reviewing the findings from the independent investigation and viewing the heartbreaking images of the ling dogs, I'm frankly astonished that all but three dogs managed to survive the horrific conditions they endured. I have several important concerns and questions that I hope you'll address. Number one, A C O Leiler's time card and salary discrepancies. The investigation was described as an all-encompassing, yet there's no mention of discrepancies in A C O Leiler's reported work hours and salary. Multiple citizens raised this issue at various meetings after reviewing records obtained through FOIA requests. Submitting and being paid for hours that were clearly impossible to have worked is a serious matter, arguably theft from the town. Is the town pursuing reimbursement or taking any formal steps to investigate this financial misconduct? Number two, accountability for animal cruelty. The independent report explicitly states that A C O Leiler was negligent in her duties, and her inaction directly led to the suffering of nearly thirty dogs and the death of three. Under any other circumstances, including, for example, Cook Hill, a private citizen found with dogs in such conditions matted for confinement, urine burns, untreated medical conditions, would face arrest and felony animal cruelty charges. So my question is, when can the community expect legal action to be taken? I also would like to know when will a warrant be issued for her arrest? Number three, involvement of Lieutenant Miller and Chief Dreyf. The investigation also references Lieutenant Miller and Chief Dreyf, both of whom were aware of these conditions of these animals. As law enforcement officers, they are legally and ethically obligated to report, investigate, and act, yet failed to do so. Their inaction raises serious questions about complicity. What steps are being taken to hold them accountable? And will arrest be, will arrest warrants be pursued? The residents of Cheshire deserve transparency, accountability, and real change. This tragedy cannot be ignored or brushed aside. It is your duty as a town council to ensure that those responsible are held accountable and not just for the sake of justice for these animals, but to restore the community's faith in the local government. I personally am confused as to why keeps this, tonight keeps being referred to as resolution because in my, in my opinion, tonight is the night where we should start cleaning house. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Kathy Regunis, Sixty Clintonville Road, Northford, Connecticut. There are countless individuals who worked tirelessly to bring justice for the thirty dogs who suffered severe neglect and for the three who tragically died. Among them, two people in particular deserve public recognition, Jean Melendez and Christine Cormier. Jean has shown relentless determination and passion. Her drive is unmatched, like the strength of a thousand advocates. As a respected attorney with unwavering values, she brought critical legal expertise and leadership to a cause. In a short time, she mobilized a group of concerned citizens who stood up and demanded accountability for the abuse that occurred, not in a private facility, but within a municipal shelter operated by the town of Cheshire. Without Jean's vision and commitment, none of this progress would have been possible. Christine Cormier was instrumental in shining a light on what had been Cheshire's dark secret, the abuse and neglect happening inside the Cheshire Animal Shelter. Her efforts helped awaken the public to the inhumane conditions that thirty dogs endured. Her meticulous record-keeping and deep knowledge of animal welfare laws became invaluable tools in the fight for justice. Her TV interview was seen nationwide and helped amplify this issue far beyond Cheshire, bringing it into the homes across the country. There are many others who play vital roles. Some risk their jobs and personal security to speak the truth. These brave whistleblowers are heroes. They gave a voice to the voiceless and stood up when it mattered the most. Thank you, Mel and Rob. To, to everyone else within this group, many of whom wear orange or purple shirts representing the organizations they serve, know this. So long as animal abuse exists, our voice will not be silenced. We will continue to stand, speak, and fight for those who cannot. I think there was a couple of comments I want to make. There was one, when we talked about, when you guys talked about the report, there was a statement that vet care will be given when needed. What does that mean? I think you have to be more specific here because April Leiler did not believe in vet care. Are we certain that this is not going to happen again? I think that has to be tightened up. Also, there was a comment about how this started from the top on down. Other A C Os offer to help. And not only other A C Os, other towns. There was, was a private kennel in North Haven that came and asked her, A C O Leiler, we are available to help. So when you say it starts at the top, no. It started with April, and she stopped any efforts to help. Also, I know that it was mentioned that you're a town council and you have limitations as to what you do and you don't do. You hire the town manager and the town attorney. That's your job. That's what you do. Think about this. As a town council, Mr. Kimball and Mr. D'Onofrio, their jobs are in your hands. Do they do what you wanted them to do in this case? And then there was a comment that you rescued them, the thirty dogs, from harm. You didn't rescue them from harm. You took them from one harmful situation and you put them into a hell. Those dogs were at least healthy, not when you guys got them. Also, there are laws in place. I could tell you by sitting in a courtroom a couple of times a week, two to three times a week, that, yeah, there are laws in place, but they're not upheld. So please, you guys, do better. Also, Acting Chief Jordaner, I'm sorry if I got your name wrong, Miller, Sergeant Miller and Chief Dreyf, they were responsible for A C O Leiler and the Cheshire Pound. You're putting a lot of faith in Lieutenant Miller, where I think that he should be one of the people who is not only reprimanded, but brought to justice for what he did. He saw what was happening daily at that pound. I thank you very much. I thank those of you who are going to put the effort to make this situation better. And you have a wonderful town here, you really do.
Thank you, Ms. Regunis.
Hello, my name is Lorraine Sarno, three twenty-one South Cherry Street, Wallingford. Reading the news today makes my heart so sad. You have an animal control officer, April Leiler, putting in for retirement on Friday, leaving with a full pension, I would assume, and still working for two other towns. Where's the justice, where's the accountability? She needs to be held accountable in some way. In your findings, you have found everything that we have been saying for the past eleven months to be true. The abuse, the neglect, the deaths were all there. I came here tonight asking for justice, asking for her firing, her termination. You have an abuser who was running the show for two-plus years, one that had no compassion, empathy, or conscience for what she did. Her crocodile tears and remorse during interviews is only there to save herself. She got caught, so now she has to backtrack. She said she would ask for help and in the future would do things differently. It's too late. Dogs suffered and some died because of her inability to do the right thing. This board and attorney continued to cover for her actions for eleven months, never putting her on administrative leave, and now she gets to retire? That's not justice, that's not accountability. That's not doing your job as town council. Even though she put in for retirement on Friday, you can still fire her tonight. Above all, she needs her license revoked and never be allowed around animals ever again. We'll never forget what she did. I'm so sorry for the innocent lives lost and abused on her watch. We just can't let them die in vain. Hopefully, Cheshire will be made better for it. I pray for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sarno.
So hi, my name is Carrie DiLorenzo, former A C O, Waterbury, a couple other towns. We, being at Waterbury, we used Cheshire Pound multiple times. Every time our pound got closed, every time we were, we had too many dogs. We held forty runs, indoor/outdoor kennels. So when you go to clean them, it's eighty kennels. And we, the stuff, I'm not going to sit here and, I could tell you for hours why I witnessed because going to the pound, you know, it was just sheer laziness on April's part. Like, leaving our dogs, she refused to do anything for our dogs. The Waterbury dogs would sit there to three o'clock, four o'clock, five o'clock, whenever she refused to clean them or feed them. A Waterbury A C O had a, you know, after hours, I was usually the one, because I do live in Cheshire, went to do it. And multiple times after I heard April took these dogs, I personally volunteered, like, to come down, do whatever. Even before this, for years, I've been, I've always done animal rescue, I should back up, since I was like twelve. That's when I took my first dog. Countless times, April, the dog sat there for a month. Let me take a video, like, I was moving the Waterbury dogs. We were full all times at forty dogs. On the weekends, there was one A C O to clean for eighty runs plus do calls. And as I'm sure everybody's aware, Waterbury's way busier than Cheshire. I was able to handle it every other weekend. For her not to do this, like, I would personally take dogs and do things with my own money if the town refused. That's what an A C O's prime job is, to look after animal care and control. She waited far too long. I want to thank Mal, Jean, everybody. I, this was my first meeting, I stayed silent just because of past experiences with April and, and, and knowing how she works. I, I was friends with, I forgot her name, A C O from twenty years ago. What was it, what is it? Norma. She has the same exact things that you guys have been hearing for months. She cried to the, she cried to the chain of command for help. She had to quit, her hands were tied. The next A C O assisted, same thing. The next ACO assisted, same thing. April was like, "I want you in." And I said, "April, I could never, ever work for you because I would flip everything in a heartbeat." I own two businesses in towns. I offered to do rabies clinics, this, that, she, no, no. She didn't, she wanted not to do anything. There's so much more I could have brought to the pound, as I'm sure everybody, she knows. I mean, I've been doing, like I said, I've been doing this and doing this, and I could do her eye, her job, with my eyes closed. That's how easy her job was. And for an ACO to neglect the way she did, you could look at her dogs at home, they're not missing a hair out of place. She knew, I think she should be held higher accountable because that is her job. She's an ACO. Firsthand, just like, I forgot who said, was just arrested. So if we could arrest them so easy, why is April still not in cuffs? And she should be paying back the town because my tax dollars just paid for the whole, everything you already knew. I could have told you this 10 years ago, before the case even came. It's just common sense. You walk through, you didn't even have to walk in the pound. You smell the urine, piss, whatever you want to call it. You could smell it from the outside. It's common sense. You don't need a scholarship. I didn't go to college, and I know abuse when I see it. It's just sad that it took this long, this many people to take their blinders off and actually untie their hands and do something. Like, if I could run it tomorrow, I would, and I know I could make a huge difference because of everything with my own to bring for it. I still have all my ACO connections and I still talk to everybody in rescues, and it's just the amount of years I tried to invest in helping her with these dogs and was totally denied, denied, denied. And it's been an ongoing situation. So I thank everybody for bringing it to light, and 10 years ago, this would have been swept under the rug. It's because people, they just don't care, especially about dog pounds. Working in Waterbury and a couple other towns, the Dog Pound is the last on the list to be worried about. Unfortunately, it is. It kills me because we've had cruelty cases. I've dealt with, over, like I said, I would take care of 40 dogs. 28 dogs is breeze. I could do that at my house. You know what I mean? I could do it. It's no excuse. She had plenty of help offered. I know she's going to be gone, but where is the arrest? Day one, she should have been put in handcuffs. Period. Period. Because if she showed up to my house and witnessed my dogs like that, I guarantee you I would be arrested.
Right. Yes. She's retiring with a pension.
And, you know, who's going to pay back the town? Who's going to, you know, I live it. And I'm not pointing fingers, I'm honestly not. It's just, I've been watching the comments, watching the group, watching everything, and I just, you know, tonight I had to come. I was like, I have to come because, you know, I just, thank you all, and hopefully this is the turn for the better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lorenzo. Anyone else?
Peter.
Yes.
One of you said that your, or your dogs are family, and they are. They are pets, whatever you're going to call them, is a family member. But you've got to remember, while those dogs are sitting there day in and day out, waiting for that one person to come in, they don't have family. That ACO has to be topped because they, that's who they see, day in and day out. They face fear when she is there. I can't imagine what they went through.
Do you want to use the mic?
No.
Okay.
That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kimball, any closing comments? Chief? Council members, Mr. Veliber?
Just a question. On Jim Block's letter, was he going to get an answer on that? Or? His question was, you know, I guess, he's basically, he asked if someone could respond to his letter, so I'm just curious if that's, if there's going to be a response to that letter.
What are the questions?
Yeah. I think his question was basically, it sounds like, it sounds like...
Do you want me to read it?
Yes, okay.
Just tell me the questions.
Right, he's going to read it.
Did Mr. DiAgostino inform Mr. D'Onofrio of what was happening at the pound? If so, what did Mr. D'Onofrio do with that information?
What does that mean? What was happening at the pound?
Are you serious?
I think the letter says...
I'm just asking a question. I don't know what the question is.
The previous says, let me go back a little bit. As I mentioned at last month's council meeting...
I can't hear you.
I was made aware, meaning Mr. Block was made aware, that multiple people had contacted the town attorney on or about May 4th, 2024, advising of some of the terrible conditions and treatment of the dogs at the Cheshire AC facility. When I mentioned this to council, I was unaware that these people had apparently spoken to Lou DiAgostino and not Mr. D'Onofrio. And then the two questions. My question is, did Mr. DiAgostino inform Mr. D'Onofrio of what was happening at the pound? If so, what did Mr. D'Onofrio do with that information?
I can tell you this, okay? I did have conversations with Lou when he was contacted in the course of the litigation because, remember what we were engaged to do? We were engaged to represent the town in a statutory action, which, as I explained many times to the council, we don't just get to take somebody's dogs. You have to bring an action in Superior Court to get temporary and permanent custody of the dogs. So that's what we were representing the town in. In the context of that, Lou was contacted in May of 2024 by several people, and I've seen the email correspondence that he received, and I've seen what he did in response to that, and I've seen his notes from telephone conversations. And I can confirm with 100% accuracy that everything he did was appropriate for what a lawyer should do when they get that kind of information. If you want more detail than that, if you want substantive information, then what you'll have to do, Attorney Veliber, you understand this, under Rule 1.6 of the Connecticut Rules of Professional Conduct, there's confidentiality. It's not my privilege to waive. So the council, after informed consent, would have to waive the privilege, and then I'm happy to talk about the details of the information.
That's why, my concern was, it sounds like there's allegations that he was told about the situation and the conditions at the animal control facility and that perhaps he didn't pass that on to other people.
He was contacted about several very specific issues, and he did, in response to those communications, what he should have done. Okay?
Peter, can I just, this is, it's from Mel, so I just want to...
Just, can you use the mic?
This is like, she's not above the speaker. I'll just stand behind Jean.
All right. I'm here. All right. So, I have one question. Question is, I asked Lou...
Name and, name and address for the record, please.
My name's Melissa Chrisnowski. I live at 14 Oak Lane in Prospect.
Thank you.
I asked him to send somebody down to the pound to see the conditions of the dog before I groomed them. He quickly just said, "Groom them, groom them, groom them." I got was, just groom the 10 that needed to go back to Ling. I called Lou again and stated that, "No, they all need to be groomed. They're all in horrendous shape." And again, I asked him to please go down to the pound to see the dogs, and if he didn't, I asked him to send somebody else to. If he did send somebody, how did they not see the conditions of these dogs before I shaved them?
When did you talk to them?
And I spoke to him in May, May of 2024.
Thank you.
Ms. Allard.
I think, most importantly, my question is, going forward. Chief, I am very pleased that you've reached out to this community and you're working with them to collaborate. But my question is, on a more formal basis, what can the community expect as far as consistent collaboration to ensure that the welfare of animals are consistently being cared for, that the transparency is consistent? And it's maybe not a question for you, but more a question for the council, is there a possibility to have some sort of commission or a committee that, you know, can be established so that way the community can be involved to ensure that dogs will be properly groomed the way they should be groomed and that it's not just left up to one person to determine, you know, whether or not medical care is necessary? You know, is there a more formal process that we can expect moving forward? That's my question.
Please, Chief.
So certainly, in real speak, obviously, you know, the policies, the procedures, the cameras, which, you know, if we could possibly do live streaming so that the community at large could see the condition of the animals, but volunteers are always welcome. The pound is always open during business hours for people to stop in. We're certainly, like we said, we're going to be hiring for a new ACO, and we're looking for the best and brightest. I think I might have heard someone that might be interested back there. But, but seriously, again, we, just standing up here in front of all of you, taking accountability and realizing there's a problem is a huge first step. But on top of that, with the DOAG consent order and putting in place all of the best things that go into a modern ACO facility, and then trying to surpass that, I think is a big first step. The new reorganization, we have multiple layers of supervision, and teaming with you, our advocacy groups, is going a long way to making a big difference. Now, in answer to your question, there's, you know, I'm not going to sit here and say that 100% guaranteed nothing bad will ever happen again, but I can say with 100% guarantee that nothing that we experienced with, you know, the lack of grooming, the lack of care, the lack of veterinary expertise, that will never, ever happen again.
Ms. Allard, I...
May I ask one question? Because I don't...
Can I, just let me, let me get through my thought, and then I'll have you go up to the mic, so as you're making your way up to the mic, I'll do that. To Ms. Allard's point, we currently have a Public Safety Commission that I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we received an email about today that there may be an opening on that board, so something tells me that there may be someone in the room that might be interested in serving on that. But I would like to see kind of an animal control representative on the Public Safety because Public Safety, or Animal Control, reports directly to the police department, and that's what this board and commission is all about. So I think that's the direction that I would, what I would go to.
Okay. Kathy Regunis, 60 Clintonville Road, Northford. I just want to confirm what I just heard tonight because I don't think I fully understood this the whole time. And I understand you can't answer this question because of that legal clause, but in May of 2024, your legal representation, the legal office that represents the town of Cheshire, knew that there was abuse going on in that facility. They were warned. I just hope that when you people get together again, the town council, and speak to your attorney, that you wonder how many dogs' lives would not, would have been spared had your legal representation told you the conditions back in May of 2024, what was going on? Because they knew. You just heard that. Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Marco. Anything else from council members?
May I speak? Just a minute.
Yes.
Linda Pleva, 23 Norton Place in Plainville. I just have a question. Like, whose responsibility is it? I understand it's not you guys. So whose responsibility is it to see that April Leeler is brought to justice and arrested? Who, who's responsible for that? Oh, come on. Somebody's got to know. No?
Don't lawyer?
I don't know. I'm looking to them for an answer.
Sorry.
Who's...
Well, what I will tell you from, from information that I know as well as this group, that the Department of Agriculture had requested from the state's attorney a warrant for arrest, and that warrant was denied. I would ask the state's attorney where, where the warrant stood.
Okay. So, right, so justice will never be done.
Any other comments from members of the public?
I do have one more question. Sorry. I forgot to ask. Marina Bagliori, Southington, Connecticut. So what will happen in this situation if its advocacy group never come out? Did we ever know what abuse will occur? Anybody can answer this question for me?
I didn't understand the question.
So if we never come and start to, in November, sending messages and telling you, abuse in an ACO will be continuous?
I think what you've heard tonight from not only this council, but specifically from our acting police chief, is that there will be more accountability and certainly more supervision within the animal control facility.
I understand this, and I thank for it, but I'm saying, what if we never step up and never continues after argument, month after month, to tell you and persist and post it and tell everybody what abuse in Cheshire ACO? Would anybody will know about this? What will happen to this dog and pound?
I think...
Because according to all of you, you never knew anything after months we speak. So who would be, no, this is case will go in the dark and this dog will die under ACO April?
So...
What would happen if we never come and put this in because nobody went and checked on her?
All right. Can I answer now, Ms. Bagliori?
Sure.
Okay. I think what you heard from our acting chief of police, as I said earlier, is that there is going to be a more direct and more consistent line of communication between the animal control officer, the assistant animal control officer, the supervisor, and ultimately the chief of police. So there will be people that will know about it before the advocacy groups know about it.
So, and tomorrow, ACO April will believe her job is innocent and go in her own way without any consequence after abuse report, what we heard from the lawyer, what evidence been presented, what nobody believed to us. So she will believe is an innocent, is an innocent person without anything going on in her future, and she can apply for another job in another town because she's still a young person. Actually, she's still working for another two towns. She working for Durham, and she work for the Haddam currently. So she'll continue to duty after we all learned from investigation she abused animals. So where is the justice for this?
Thank you.
Hi, I just have to ask, this is Lorraine Sarno, 321 South Cherry Street in Wallingford. How can she retire with a pension after what she's done? She should be fired. Who can fire her? I don't understand it. I mean, this woman abused animals. She neglected them, and she's retiring with a pension. She can go anywhere in Connecticut and get a job after this because she doesn't, nobody knows anything. Nobody knows anything. It doesn't make sense to me. She's not being held accountable. She is not, there is not justice for those animals. She needs to be held accountable.
Just another question. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Linda. I would just like to know if...
We have to have you on the microphone because people at home cannot hear unless you're at the microphone.
Michelle Regunis, 315 North Brooksville Drive. I just... I just, I have a question. You said that Department of Agriculture tried to issue a warrant and they were denied. Correct?
Applied for, let me be very clear, because as, it's almost like telephone. The more people that hear it, the more different it gets. The Department of Agriculture applied for a warrant through the state's attorney's office, keep me honest here, and was denied a warrant for arrest. And, and the, the writing on the warrant as it was sent back to DOAG said, "Do not reapply." The box "do not reapply" was checked.
So what was that date?
I, I don't have that in front of me.
Was that prior to Monday?
Pardon?
Was that prior to Monday, before the investigation came out? Okay, so...
Oh, this, this went back...
Since this $60,000 investigation just finished on Monday.
I'm sure Ms. Melend, that's going to get you that information.
I'm wondering if, if the town of Cheshire can issue a warrant, since the investigation, we just paid $60,000 for an investigation. So can Cheshire try to issue a warrant? I'm genuinely asking.
No, yeah, that's not, I'm sorry, the question is...
The question is...
Can the town of Cheshire issue an arrest warrant?
See, correct, because...
The state's attorney's office issues arrest warrants.
We just finished a $60,000 investigation, and there's pages and pages and pages of animal abuse with April Leeler's name on it. I'm wondering if the town of Cheshire can now follow through with the investigation. The reason you do an investigation is for legal matters, correct? I'm wondering if you could now follow through with the investigation and apply for a warrant for her arrest?
With new information?
Or else what would be the point of the investigation?
The investigation, based on certain case law, cannot be used in a criminal prosecution. It's for personnel purposes only. It's called Garrity, is the name of the case. So the town doesn't issue arrest warrants. The state's attorney's office issues arrest warrants. And as Chairman Talbot indicated...
Can we fire her? So can she, wait, so can she be fired tonight?
I'm not the council, Labor Council, I don't, I don't have any opinion on that.
I mean, we're, now we're kind of circling the drain, so to speak.
It's not circling, it's being held accountable, it's legally. The investigation, the only reason you do an investigation is for legal matters. Let's be honest here. The town spent $60,000 trying to find out if this woman broke the law or not. And she did. That's all, thank you.
Okay. I think we've, did you have something else, or you had the same question?
I would like some proof that DOAG cannot reapply. And I'm not sure that I...
But you're, you're asking the Cheshire Town Council what the State Department of Agriculture can do. It's, you know, all I'm telling you is what I know, and that is that the Department of Agriculture applied to the state's attorney's office for a warrant. It was denied, and the box that said "do not reapply" was checked.
Does that give them free run to...
I am not going to speak for the Department of Agriculture.
Yeah, okay. Got it.
Janice Copes, 25 Salem Road, Prospect, Connecticut. The town manager, I think, earlier said that there was additional proceedings to come forward, that you're doing something else, but you can't speak on it.
It would not be appropriate for me to comment on any personnel matters. I can't.
You can't say anything as it were?
I did say earlier, though, that April Leeler is leaving effective tomorrow, so that part I can address.
But she is allowed now to go elsewhere and do this. You spent all this money and all this time, and you have proved that she has abused these animals. And you didn't fire her? Why?
Again, we're not, we're not here to discuss, and we're not able to discuss personnel matters.
But then this is ridiculous. Why did you do that investigation? Why? To what, tell us what we already knew? Please tell me, what was the reason to spend $60,000 on an investigation if you weren't going to act on it?
There was, there was action taken on the report.
What was taken?
And you've heard about that, that April Leeler will no longer be employed by the town of Cheshire as of tomorrow.
Is she fired, or she is just walking away?
I am not going to discuss personnel matters. Thank you for your comments. And again, thank you all for being here tonight. We appreciate your input, as I've said in the past, and you heard from my colleagues, we appreciate your advocacy throughout this entire process. And with that, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Jinks and Mr. Velliber, all in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.